All right, so it may have to be adjusted. Okay, everybody set? Ready, set? Okay, good evening. Uh, we're gonna call the order, the uh Cornwallon Hudson Village Planning Board. This at seven oh seven on fifteen July twenty twenty five. Uh, tonight, we have really two items. Uh, the first item is fairly admin, that's gonna be taking a look at our minutes. The minutes from both twenty um May and seventeen June. And the reason why we have to go back to twenty May is because in June, we didn't have a quorum of the folks that were actually there on the twentieth. So we just, I asked the two members, Kristen and Vishwa, plus myself and Gary, um, to vote on and take a look at um, the twenty May. And if you feel comfortable with that, if I could hear a motion. But the twenty May needs to be folks that were present. Just wanna correct the record.
All right, I'll motion.
Motion? Do I hear a second for twenty May?
I'll second it.
Second? And everybody but Lee? Uh, wanna vote? Do we support?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so twenty May is done. Now, let's take a look at seventeen June. Seventeen June is really for the three members that were present. To my right. Did you have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Um, I shall move.
Okay, you're
I'll second.
Second? All in favor? Okay, the minutes are taken care of? Uh, the other topic we have today is, is the continuation of the public hearing. And we decided to keep the public hearing open because we had some unfinished business on a couple of requirements. And we wanted to give uh the applicant the time to be able to come back and, and talk about that. And if anybody from the public was gonna attend to also make a comment on the particular project. Um, so what I want to do, if everybody uh is ready, I'd like to take a motion to continue the public hearing. Do I, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so the public hearing is back open again. Um, what I'd like to hear from is Mr. Fuller?
Sure.
And if you could give us a brief summary and we, we take a look at your report. And also what you documented from uh the Orange County Planning. I'd like to hear about both of those topics.
Okay, good evening to the board and, and obviously to the public. Um, so in response to our last meeting and some of the comments that we had received, uh, we resubmitted revised site plan documents uh, and also what we call a stormwater pollution prevention plan to Jason's office for review, um, which was a condition of the site plan. Relative to the requirements that were discussed at the last meeting, one was in regards to Orange County Planning had sent a memorandum, which we had at the last meeting. Three of the five items, uh, such as uh stormwater lighting and uh landscaping, I believe, are, are satisfied and identified in the, in the site plan documents uh that have been reviewed and submitted to date. Uh, there was one specific item, the environmental constraints, which identified um what I'll call certain uh endangered or threatened species that are known to be in the area. We uh employed a, a local environmental scientist who has expertise and, and a reputable uh position with the D, New York State DEC. His name is Mr. Peter Torgeson. Uh, he'd visited the property, you know, obviously reviewed um historical information relative to what's available through the DEC about habitat. Uh, and he provided a, a letter identifying that the scope of this project as it relates to those uh various species does not have an impact uh on those species and their habitats. And so we submitted that to you for the record, um, which, you know, and we'll ask you to accept that, that uh you know, based on Mr. Torgeson's recommendation, there is really no impact as it relates to those species. And as I identified previously, um, it's customary, you know, as we prepare the environmental assessment forms, the EAFs as they're called, um, you know, the, the, the state has created a website which allows us to generate it. Um, and if there are certain um species that are known to have habitats in the area, it essentially asks us to, to review and identify if there are any impacts. And so as such, I think, you know, based on Mr. Torgeson's uh expertise, I think, you know, that addresses that comment. The other uh comment that was in the county's letter was um about the visual impact assessment. And I, I believe we discussed that with the board last month, that uh due to the nature of this building being a one-story building, uh that there would be no visual impact as it related to that, that comment generated by the county. And I think the board concurred with that last month. Um, so that was the county's comments. Uh, and, and again, I know, and I'll let Mr. uh Jason speak to any comments that he had. But we attempted to address uh the comments that were in his prior letter. Um, I do know he, he sent out another memorandum today and I reviewed it. And I believe most of the comments center around the SWIP at this point, you know, which are technical comments as it relates to stormwater, uh which we can easily uh address those. I know we had discussed, uh, we also discussed a it was, it's actually in the application about the potential for a bond. Um, and we, I submitted earlier today, a, a cost estimate for what we consider a uh generally applicable items as it relates to like stormwater and landscaping. Um, in my correspondence, I also requested if, if the board is able to, we, we asked that it would be waived due to the nature of this project, if that's possible. Just because I, it's well within their intent to, to do any uh, any full development as it relates to the site plan. Uh, the bulk of the cost of this, this project will certainly center around the building construction at this point. With that, I believe those were the major items that were kind of open-ended at, at the end of uh last month's meeting. And so with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, and answer any further questions that you have.
Okay, thank you very much. What I'd like to do is, one of the issues you've raised, I'd like to leave to the very end after we've gone through everybody's other comments on other issues, and that's the bond issue. So what I'd like to do first is ask the, the public, is there anyone present that would like to ask a question about this particular project that may have not been here last week? Or, um, last month? There's no new mem, no new public uh members here, okay? All right, then I'd like to do is, is to go to the board and ask if they have any particular questions. So Kristen, would you like to ask first question? You have a question?
I'm gonna defer.
You're gonna defer? Okay.
Yeah, I, so Jason, that, my highlighter over here from your letter and this document, they cover my highlighted area, right?
Yeah, actually, these, if you, I had prepared, and I know I just handed it out when we got here this evening. I have a draft resolution for your review. I'm not sure exactly what you have highlighted on Jason's memo.
It's the language.
But those, there were a number of what we'll call outstanding, like checklist items, punch list items, so to speak. In the draft resolution that I've provided to you, if you look at the very bottom of the draft, the items that were listed in Jason's memo to John are listed as conditions. So if the board wanted to, uh, if we get that far, the board would, would be inclined to approve it. Um, and sorry, I don't wanna speak for Jason, but we had a discussion today and Jason didn't feel that any of the punch list items, so to speak, warranted a further public hearing fair. Right? So based on that, the, the items that are still outstanding are listed in the draft approval as conditions. So there were some stormwater prevention plan items that Jason wanted, that's listed as a condition to submit that. There were a couple of, couple of different things, some cut cut sheets as far as fill and cut and fill grading. There, and they're specifically laid out there. So again, my intent was to cover everything that was on Jason's outstanding item list to make it a condition if you wanna head to approve it.
Second, I have one more question. Why, why would you not want to do the, why would you wanna waive the bond? Cost?
Well, generally, it's a cost. It, you know, typically, it, it's cost upfront monies that the uh, that the school would have to front, that the, the village holds until the project is completed. And so if it's not
Back to you then.
Well, yeah, at, at the appropriate time when everybody has signed off on the conclusion of the project and a CO is granted, then bonds are typically lifted, yes.
Yeah, and John, if I may, I don't, I don't really think anybody was talking about a cash bond to file a, a cash bond with the village. We were thinking just generally discussing it would be a performance bond. So there wouldn't be anything per se that the village would be holding. But yes, there would be
Yeah, I, I, well, either way, I mean, bonds, whether it's a performance bond or a cash bond, they're basically two alternatives. Um, it still costs them money, you know, upfront that they have to front, you know, for the duration of the project. That's, so.
That's it.
Gary?
Do you have an idea of how much that would cost ballpark?
Well, I mean, generally, we do cost estimates. And what's unclear is like, we, we have to agree on the full scope of what the site improvements are that would warrant, you know, uh, what I call municipal impacts. So, um, cuz I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that what is defined as bonded, bonded is in the uh, in the ordinance, is it?
No, I think what I would generally say is it was site improvements exclusive of the building, which frankly is, I would say, the, the bulk of the cost.
Yeah, I mean, bulk of the cost is the building, yeah.
I would say that the things that the board or maybe the village would be itself or adjoinders would be concerned with would be the stormwater improvements and then the landscaping, especially since as a mitigating factor offered to do additional planting to mitigate the tree removal.
Yeah.
Those are the things that I think would be included.
Yeah, so typically, uh, you know, in other municipalities, just to make reference, um, you would bond a, a percentage of landscaping or a percentage of stormwater infrastructure or other site improvements that have, like, if there's a roadway or a driveway that fronts on a, a certain municipal road, um, you would bond that. You know, to make sure that the work gets completed in accordance with the scope of the project and the plans. Um, that way, you know, in case something happens to the developer, the, the town has recourse to, to finish those improvements. And that's typically the history behind the bonds. I mean, an estimate, I mean, roughly, you know, I mean, we're probably upwards of close to a hundred grand.
That's, John, that's your estimate, so to speak, on the, on the landscaping and the
On the combination of landscaping and what I'll call the stormwater infrastructure, yeah.
That's not the cost to the school, right?
Well, that's, that's, that would be the cost of construction. Um, you know, the question, and I haven't discussed with them, you know, pursuing it, you know, so there's cash bonds, which obviously would be an impact, you know, obviously to, you know, uh, have a hundred grand tied up for the duration of the project would be, you know, difficult. But we haven't really discussed performance bonds. There are avenues where you can get almost like an insurance bond, you pay a percentage. Um, but that's something I'm not sure if the school has ever bonded in the past. That's not a discussion we've had, so.
You know what I said? Here, Lee?
No. No, I have nothing to say now.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay. What I'd like to do is, is since we've talked about it a few times, is, is let Jason just go over his final thoughts on uh, some of the discussion uh Joe had just mentioned on his letter and some of the requirements and how he feels about them. And I think we could kind of move on on that. The, the, the bond issue, if I may, um, and we haven't had that discussion. But the thing is, is a surety bond, my understanding is, is a percent of whatever the, the total cost of whatever you agree on is gonna be bonded. Or, you know, you could have the cash deposit, but the surety bond is, I'm sure you're gonna have a performance bond with the general contractor.
Well, certainly, the, the contractor will have performance, absolutely, yeah. I mean, this will be bid
Make sure it's done proper.
Yeah, though, this will be bid and there will be a performance bond. This is just specifically to you, the village, yeah. Yeah.
Jason?
Sure, so we actually don't have very many comments. There were only four planned review comments, uh, and I think a couple are very minor. There's a suggestion about potentially rerouting some of the water sewer connections. Um, and then there are a series of comments that relate to the stormwater pollution prevention plan. And I think most of those pertain to, to some changes between uh the prior permit and this permit, which we're asking to be incorporated in the current version that John has submitted. But there's nothing uh that we think is gonna have a significant impact in the the way the site plan is presented at this point.
And you feel comfortable with um the letter from the environmental scientist?
Yeah, again, based on the, the level of impact from the work that is going to be done and uh the, the, the species that were identified, I think there is very, very limited potential for any impact to either of those species outside from this work in particular.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Carmo, any particular comments, anything you'd like to add?
All the comments from the building department when I did my review for the site plan were, were correctly amended. So I'm okay with that. The question that I have is with the letter from the, from the county in reference to the lighting. And what we discussed about the dark sky, we had the appetites, we wanna make sure that is done. But they're also talking about additional uh energy bulbs, for example, curfew on areas that are not gonna be lit. Are you gonna be providing those as well?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's generally part of a lighting package, you know, as far as like shutting lights off the, I mean, like the parking lot lights you're saying would be something that would get shut off overnight, you know, especially if, if the school is not in use, yeah.
Maybe not shut off completely, but reduced.
Reduced, yeah, yeah.
So, and so what I like to just, uh, went out to the record here, in being that you're agreeing to all of that, which is probably going on beyond a little bit from the core requirement for energy efficiency light, to that be made part of the, you know, for the plan review. So that's gonna be have to be included in the plans when I do the review for the building permit. I have to make sure that all this stuff will be provided in the plans as well.
Yeah, we take no exception to that, 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 that's fine.
Does, John, does the school have a policy regarding like lighting, like timing and that kind of stuff? I would think that maybe that's something that they should look at in general, safety, et cetera, on campus.
All right, do, do either of you have any thoughts on that at this point?
All of our lights are for security and safety for the students that are walking all, you know, um, especially in the wintertime when it's dark by five o'clock with all the wildlife and everything that's up there that they need to be able to be seeing on walkways and everything else. So, uh, most of our lighting plan over the last thirty years have come from being put on and also from the uh Central Hudson of Red Bull poles. Putting the poles and then putting the, the Cobra heads. Now, we've switched them all to LED, um, with a, a thing we did a couple of years back with Central Hudson. But, yeah, that's pretty much it. It's just, it's all about the safety of the students so that they're all safe walking around the campus.
Sure, and I'm not taking any objection to the lighting, and I don't think Matty is either. I think I was just uh wondering, I guess, if in, in effort to maintain the campus in a safe way, that there was any policy in effect. But if there isn't, that's fine too. I guess John's gonna provide some scheme for lighting in terms of timing, et cetera.
All the lighting on campus exterior, well, pretty much interior now too, everything's LED. So they're all more energy efficient lighting, so that's been swapped out.
Okay, anything else, Manny?
No, okay.
Okay. John, I had mentioned um earlier on about a um tree preservation plan requirement, et cetera. And based on, you know, thinking through that again, where it's already a built-up area. And you've, you've clearly stated that you're gonna double the amount of trees.
Yes.
Uh, so I feel very comfortable with that. So I take that off the table, um, as far as a requirement, I'm, I'm good with that. Let's see. Is any other, any other comments besides, I'm gonna ask Mr. McKay to, to talk a little bit. Any other comments from anybody here from the board, some of the professionals or members of the public on this particular project? Cuz I'm looking at preparing to close the, the public hearing, where I wanna talk to legal first. Okay, I don't hear any? Nobody from the board members?
We tried to uh get uh comments from
Last time.
The public, last time. And, and I finally asked, why are you here? Without uh, without any comments. And I think it's the same situation now. And I think it probably indicates where we may be heading this evening.
There's a lot of support. Joe, could you just go over your recommendation on the bond and then a recommendation on after that, should we close the, the public hearing or not?
Sure, um, so we had a brief discussion, of course, bef, bef, uh, we were informed that you had been communicating, in communication with Jason today about the amount of the bond. And it's fair. Um, I don't think anybody anticipated any kind of a cash bond, whether the number's fifty or thirty, or even if it was twenty-five, it's no, no rational basis for you to put up twenty, whatever amount is. So that, that wouldn't make any sense. So we did have a discussion in terms of a performance bond. Uh, and of course, as you, as you said, John, that normally you post a couple of percent of that bond. So, um, one of the things that I had suggested to the board, it's obviously a public, it's, well, it's a private institution, I guess, that's open to the public. You know, you don't have a lot of money, so I think the general consensus after our discussion was that the board would like to see a bond posted. But rather than have you post any kind of a bond now, when the plan's being signed, we could rather have you post a bond that's necessary when you make your building permit application. This way, uh, whether it's two percent, and I, I don't profess to have a specific answer on this. If it's two percent, three percent, four percent of the amount to get your performance bond, you wouldn't need to do that now, right? So you could finish up with your plans, bid out your, your job. And if you're ready next spring, maybe, is that your target?
That's the target, yeah.
Yeah, so this way, you wouldn't have to purchase a bond now and be in a position where you may have to renew it again next year, you know, while all this is going on. So if you were to purchase the bond and make it a part of your submission for your, your building permit applications, I think that would, that, that would be a reasonable accommodation so that you don't have to put that money up now. Uh, and that may potentially at least keep you to just a one year of a bond, so you don't have to renew it. So there's some cost savings there. Um, I had mentioned that to the board, and I, I think the board is generally okay with that uh in lieu of waiving the bond, because quite frankly, our code doesn't specifically say we have the authority to waive it. So I'm very reluctant to waive it in its entirety, right? So then the question becomes, what's a rational, reasonable amount of the bond? Maybe set a, a limit for a bond not to exceed a certain amount and then have it uh again, make it a requirement that it be posted only at the time when you go for your building permit application.
Yeah, I think that's a, a fair approach. Frankly, uh, you know, in other municipalities, um where we are serving the applicant, we've been required to post a bond on even uh remediation work on a single-family residence. So I don't know that it's abnormal, and again, that's a sole, you know, a single owner. I think, as Joe mentioned, it's gonna be a couple percentage of sixty to whatever the estimated amount is gonna be, so a few thousand dollars.
And just, and for your, sorry, for your client's information and edification, we've actually had, cuz part of this is the landscaping.
Yes.
We've actually required uh single and two-family homeowners to post landscaping bonds. So, so there's, we have to have some equity too, so that we're consistent in the way that we address
Uh, understood, and I think we've had this conversation. If the board doesn't have authority to waive it, we understand that's, and we're not gonna go to the village board for an exemption. So, uh, we haven't discussed the, the scope of a surety bond, but yes, I, I, we can do that. And if we can make it a condition that it's, you know, provided at the time of building permit, that would be fine.
Do we have any kind of, do you wanna try to set the parameters of the bond? Do you wanna make a submission to Jason? What are you, what are you comfortable doing, John?
And indeed, I had sent you a brief estimate over the other day, or yesterday, or earlier today, I should say.
Yeah, I think, um, I don't know that we should set a specific parameter. I think the board should just, uh, in discussion, identify what items need to be bonded. And again, my recommendation is the minimally, the stormwater and the landscaping, potentially the parking lot, and that's up to the board to determine. If you just wanna settle on the landscaping and the drainage and the stormwater, I'm fine with that. And I think that would be a, a reasonable
It's pre-standard, yeah.
And then John and I will work out what we think is the appropriate amount of that, those improvements based on standardized guidelines like RSMEs or other.
Manny?
If the applicant is planning on getting the building permit in, in spring, and we're gonna allow him not to post a bond until then, you may, you should, or you shall, expand the time limit for him to apply for the permit. Because he has six months for the date of approval to get a permit, otherwise you'll have to come back to get an extension. So you may wanna discuss that now. And speaking of this extension, rather than being six months, we'll have to make it a year, you know, for him to get a permit.
Would that be something you'd put in the resolution, Joe?
Uh, I take that to mean that the applicant is requesting a six-month extension now?
I, I think that would be fair. So to be realistic, the goal has always been next spring. So we're, we're in August, I'm sorry, July. Um, so we still got a half a year to get to the end of the year. And then we would look at a, a spring construction start date. So, uh, there's a very good chance that, you know, yeah, we're gonna expire that first six months. So if we could, as part of this approval, grant us that six months now, that way we're covered.
The board will, will discuss the resolution after we close the public hearing. And I, those are two things I just heard that we need to discuss real quick. Uh, the bond and, and the extension. Okay. Recommendation on closing the public hearing now?
If, if there's no other public comment, I guess you can close.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I, I shall move, shall move, second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing is closed, and, and what I'd like to do now is, is ask the board to take a few minutes and please re, I know you just got this, take a look at the resolution. And if, just give us a minute, I'm, I apologize, we got this a little late, we just need to take a look at it, okay? And if you have any particular questions we could ask our legal. Is it twenty June?
Oh, yeah.
It's seventeen June, it's seventeen June, should be seventeen June. Complete the site. Please, please cover what you want. These bullets right there, cover what you want. No, I mean, I'm asking if you'll comfortable.
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
So it's July seventeen, so there's two July dates that are wrong.
Yes, well, no- Yes, well, no, 15, it's the 15th of July and the 20th of, it's the.
Oh, July 15. No, you're right, you're right.
17th of June. Joe, the date on here is 17 June, should be 17 June on the.
The fourth of May.
Oh, okay, oh, from the last meeting, okay, thank you.
Okay. Everybody have a chance to read it?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions on this, including a question on how we want to describe the bonding or describe the, what was the other issue?
Extension.
Extension.
Right, the extent, obviously, the extension language isn't here, right? Because that just, yeah, right. Let's see.
Does everybody feel comfortable with adding those?
I don't see a negative of the extensions.
So those would be?
Added to the resolution.
New conditions?
New conditions.
Fifth and sixth conditions?
Joe, any, any thoughts overall, reference this before we?
Well, maybe we could just read, I know the applicant hasn't seen it yet, right? So, so the draft resolution I presented to the board would have the following conditions for approval, John. Obviously, submission of a final amended site plan with whatever appropriate notes need to go on it. To provide the village engineer with cut and fill calculations and cut sheets depicting compliance with dark sky lighting guidelines and, and I know Manny, your specific comment right now. Orange. Okay. All right, so then that second condition would be providing the village engineer the cut and fill calculations and cut sheets depicting compliance with dark sky lighting guidelines and showing compliance with the recommendations in paragraph two of the Orange County 239 recommendations. The third would be the applicant shall provide the engineer for the village with a written estimate of the total cost of site improvements for the planned calculation of a performance bond to be posted in accordance with Code Section 17535, but prior to the issuance of any building permit, not at the time that the plan would be signed.
So that will be adjusted, number three?
I think number three is okay the way, the way it's stated, because I.
That's okay.
I kind of anticipated this issue, and I threw it, threw that into the draft, which I think the board was comfortable with.
Okay.
Number four, and if you'd just give me a little bit of leeway on this, John, we can make sure that you and Jason and I are all on the same page on this. The applicant shall comply with the village engineer's comments as set forth in his July 15th technical review comments. And I tried to list each of the outstanding items. It would be general item number two, plan review items three and four, and the stormwater prevention plan review items two through 11. And I think that captures them all, but if, but if Jason, you know, wants to look at it, and we might have to tweak it or add something to it. And obviously, the applicant shall pay any and all outstanding fees to the village in connection with the application. And the last would be whether this is a condition or it's just something I can include somewhere else in the resolution. The planning board would grant the applicant's request to extend the time period to obtain a building permit for one year instead of six months.
Okay.
Would you like to go through them again, or do you think that covers it?
I'll ask the board members. Anybody have any particular questions?
No, that's good.
No? Okay. Do I hear? Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution of the, for the village of Cornwall and Hudson and the planning board granting conditional approval of the site plan application submitted by the Storm King School for amended site plan approval?
I make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, very good.
Well done.
Thank you.
Well done all the way through this process, and we really appreciate it. There's a few things, I know we'll have that signed sometime this week or early next week for your leverage, but it's been a pleasure to work with you and your team and the Storm King School team. So thank you and.
Thank you for your support and helping move us along through this process, so we're grateful for that.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I want to thank the professionals on our team for their input on this and for the board members as we've gone through this process. The next board meeting is 19 August 2025. I was going to ask Mr. Carmona, do you think that Gregory Woods will be in in August, or is that to be determined? They might be ready in August, okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
Second? All in favor? Have a great day. That's mine, those are mine.
My are on my head.
That's right. All right, thank you very much. Good. You doing all right?
Yes.
Enjoying the summer?
Trying.
All right, thank you.